Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 2022 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Members, have you read last month's minutes?
Yeah.
And do you have any questions or comments about it?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And everybody, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
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 Is there anyone here from Flintlock Storage? Not you, John.
She's good. She'll be back to work in...
Oh, my, really?
But you might have her back at the next meeting.
All right.
But she's doing well, thanks, Rob. Good evening. I'm John Watson here from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture, P C. We're here for a continued site plan application for the Flintlock Self-Storage Project located on Route 52. The last meeting that we were here, we received some comments from the consultants. We made a substantial resubmission, and we did receive comments from the consultants back. I didn't see a lot of substantial comments, so I'm not going to go through them myself. I think I'll just let the consultants have the floor and let us know what you would like to discuss.
Thank you, John. Members, any questions for Mr. Watson?
Hi.
Liz, do you want to...
So, yes, I did do a review of the new submittal. There were a few comments that were addressed, but there were a number of them that remained unaddressed, which I'd like to see more progress on as we move forward. So at this point, I don't think the board is ready to take any action such as circulating for lead agency or making any referrals or setting a public hearing. We just, we need more information. There is architectural information, which we'd seen some in kind of draft form before, and we're just looking for the regular types of architectural information. And then we had asked for sidewalk easement, just the same as we did on V-Brock, another storage place. So we're not really even asking for construction of a sidewalk, just for that easement. So anyway, I don't know if offline consultation is needed or just wait for the next submittal and see what we get.
Thank you, Liz. Members, any questions? John? Oh, and let me remind everybody, when they come up to speak, please identify yourself and any connections will call.
Yes. Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Rhodey Salk and Andrews. I serve as engineer to the planning board. I am also here this evening. Bruce Barber, our environmental consultant, is not here this evening. He is actually in Buffalo preparing for his youngest daughter's wedding, so he's in a better spot than all of us. How's that sound? There are comment memos. I will address Bruce's first because I think Bruce has some of the more substantial items. I'm not going to read them. I'm not going to purport to suggest I understand everything he's asking for, but there are still some issues with the wetland because this project is, in fact, being built in the wetland. Bruce would like to see some additional information. I think his memo spells it out quite clearly, and I think he's just looking for more. And this might be the type situation, as Liz suggested, where perhaps, once Bruce returns, it might be a good idea for you guys and Bruce to talk, because sometimes memos back and forth don't, don't really convey what's necessary. And I think Bruce has some specific opinions. It's not that he's opposed to these things, but he'd like some additional documentation and some backup, because this is kind of a unique situation. I also have a memo, and as Mr. Watson indicated, they did make a submittal. A lot of my issues have been resolved. There's a couple that I, that have not, that I just wanted to touch on. The first is, as you all know, they share a common driveway. They have the right of ingress and egress. We had talked, they're going to make some improvements. We wanted some documentation that they could make those improvements. We'd also, and they had suggested, they were able to reach out to the owner who owns that right-of-way, and the owner seemed agreeable to entering into a proper cross-access-and-maintenance agreement to memorialize that. We did receive a draft of it. It has been forwarded to the planning board attorney for his review. It seems to be a substantial good-faith effort, and it appears to be headed in the right direction, and I suspect but for some minor tweaks, it will end up being acceptable to our attorney. So that's where that stands, and I think that that buttons up a rather large open issue. The other one deals with, as you may recall, as a consequence, as we've been moving through this, there's a pipe that runs across their site, connects to DOT, runs across their site. They're relocating it. They've taken the position they don't need to talk to DOT. I kind of respectfully disagree with them. My reading of the DOT Highway Design Manual would suggest, because it does accept drainage from the state right-of-way, because there is no viable history of how that connection was made and whether it was properly permitted, at the very least, you have to ask their opinion. I'm not suggesting they need a permit. I'm not suggesting they need to do anything more except consult with DOT, and if their relocation is fine and DOT is okay with it, that's as far as it needs to go. But I do believe, by my reading of the manuals, at least a consultation is in order. And other than that, the other issue is they're not proposing a septic system. They are proposing a holding tank. I have no problem with that in concept. We just need to make sure that the two people that really have an opinion, the Putnam County Health Department and the building inspector, also have no problem. I know they've reached out to Putnam County, but we haven't seen anything in writing, so we will need that. And other than that, to follow up on Liz's issue of the sidewalk, I did supply Mr. Watson with our sample agreement that you spent a lot of time working on for the V-Brock project, and we would expect something similar and to have that sidewalk shown on the plat, in some, on the plan, excuse me, in some form or another. But they have made some progress, and I think Bruce is, they've made a lot of progress on my end as the engineer. They made a little less on Bruce's end, and I think he's looking for more.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Was there an issue with the outdoor storage of the extra vehicles also?
And I'm going to jump back up here for two reasons. One, I neglected to introduce myself. My name is Liz Axelson. I am the planning consultant to the planning board. But I recalled that I had created some illustrations to kind of show this stretch of road and why we would ever have an idea of asking for a sidewalk easement in the first place. And we didn't have a meeting last time, so I didn't get a chance to touch on it. So basically, starting from the north end on the same side of the road, you have the neighborhood shopping center and lots of stores in there. You have some mixed use with office just south of that on the same side of the road. You've got the school on the other side of the road, large school campus. And then moving down closer, there's the site. And then south of the site, there's another business, a large commercial building. And across the street, there is a deli and a restaurant, which looks pretty active just from driving by there, and then an auto body place. So, and it is all zoned for commercial. That's the other thing. Let's see, where is this parcel? This parcel is a little tiny hunk here, and it's just north and south of it is commercial. Even further north is industrial office commercial, and across the road is all commercial. So that's my plug for that.
And you said there's no action we should take tonight?
No, no action.
Thank you.
I'm going to contradict her just a bit. I just would like authorization for perhaps Bruce and myself and Liz, if necessary, to actually meet with the applicant to see if we can advance this and not get caught up in memo wars, if we will, if you will. So maybe we have that authorization.
Members, how do you feel about that?
That's fine.
Aye, 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 aye.
I voted aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
John, do you have any further questions for us?
I do. I just want to circle back on a couple of things Liz said. I agree with what the consultant said. I understand their positions, and I do think that a, that a discussion with them is more helpful than going back and forth on paper once a month. I was, after reviewing all the memos in an effort to keep the project moving forward, I was going to request for a public hearing be set, because I feel that even, that there's just not a lot of substantive comments that are unresolved. You know, we know how big the buildings are, where the buildings are going to go, how we're getting access. Like, the site plan itself is figured out. The stormwater is figured out. Like, we've got the project figured out. We just don't have a lot of details. A lot of the questions they have are just details and notes and things like that. And Liz said... Liz, did you say we haven't even circulated to be lead agency yet?
So ordinarily, what the board does is we get to a point where the cup is a little more full, and we feel the project is ready to proceed. And so typically, what would happen, but I'm not recommending this, is that the board would, you know, look at, well, how much do we have to initiate SEACRA review? And in my opinion, we don't have enough. So the first step in SEACRA review, State Environmental Quality Review, would be to circulate for lead agency. And typically, the board also does its required referrals at the same time, because it goes along with circulating for lead agency, and would also set a public hearing. And then the next month, you come back and you have a hearing. But in my opinion, I don't believe you have enough for SEACRA review. And I mean, in particular, I have some comments that I'd like to have addressed before we start doing environmental review, but I think also Bruce has some environmental wetland-related questions, too. So I stand by that. You know, John may have a different opinion.
Thank you, Liz. Members, should we go by Liz's suggestion or John's?
Well, Bruce had the same statement.
Right.
Yeah, the environmental portion wasn't ready.
Right. I'm afraid we don't want to...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to chime in, and I'm not, I'm not meaning to be a contrarian, and I'm not intending to put words in Bruce's mouth, but Bruce did concur, for the most part, with Liz.
Right.
But I will remind the board, holding a public hearing is up to you folks. You may, you may wish to hold a public hearing. You run the risk of, if you don't get the information, or if the information leads you down a path that's unfulfilling, that you need more information, you run the risk of keeping it open. And we all know what ends up happening. The more you keep these open, the more everyone kind of, pardon my French, flogs the issue and doesn't really advance it. So while the opinion is totally up to you folks, the general consensus of the three of us is it might be well-advised to, one more end to the memo wars and then put it all to bed at once. But again, we defer to you, and we can manage it. And John, did we give an approval for you to work with the consultants on the, you know, offline, so that way you can get your application to the point where we can set a public hearing? So...
Yeah, that's a step to help us get there.
Yes.
But the consultant reviews and the SEACRA process are two separate, they're two parallel processes that are going on at the same time.
Correct, sir.
And, you know, we've been, I think this is our third or fourth meeting, and we still haven't declared lead agency. I mean, I would, I maintain that consultants and that you guys have enough information that we've given you to make at least a determination that you feel it's appropriate that you're the lead agency. Like, we're just trying to start the SEACRA, we're trying to get some of the process moving. So, and I don't think, I will respectfully disagree, I don't think you need a full cup in order to just declare yourself the lead agency for SEACRA. So I, other towns don't do that, and I just, I'm just asking because I feel obligated to ask, and I know that it's likely you'll follow your consultants' opinions, which I respect, but I still feel obligated to ask. You know, we've done a lot of work. We have a full stormwater plan that we submitted. The plan is, the plan is figured out. There are some just notes and details and add a sidewalk easement and get an opinion of DOT, and there are, you know, it's more than that in the memos. I'm not trying to make light of the memos, but if you read through the memos, there aren't any substantial issues, especially environmentally. We've worked with Bruce to get to a point, at the first meeting, he basically said, "You're building in a wetland. This is unacceptable. This is unapprovable." And now, by a couple of changes and some consultant reports on our end, by the next meeting, he was turned around. And I know he's not here to defend himself, and that's probably not fair to him, but that's, that's the history of what happened. I won't extrapolate anything beyond that.
I think we generally believe that it's premature to take those steps tonight.
Okay, I understand.
Let's button up the open issues and make sure we got a complete package.
And that way, we can open and close.
Before anybody else gets a look at it.
Yeah. Okay.
Otherwise, it has to stay open, and then you have a risk chance of getting more commentary.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, and you getting together with our consulting team, I think, is a real wise idea. I'm glad you're going along with that. We'll get things done right the first time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone here representing Patterson Crossing? Please, come forward.
I'm here representing the property. I am the property owner.
And how can we help you tonight?
I believe I'm here for an extension. I submitted, we submitted a submission to the board. I also submitted a letter to the board with that submission, giving you an update. I believe in your resolution. You've asked me to come in periodically.
Right.
To give the board an update.
Liz?
Can you give us a quick rundown of the status of your project?
Excuse me?
Can you give us a quick rundown of the status of your project?
Yeah, I could say this, that I've given you a status in the letter, but I'd be very happy to sort of summarize it.
Yes, because the public hasn't seen it.
All right, so, well, the project is a very long time in the making, to say the least. I've invested $15 million into the project to date. We have kept every approval up meticulously with every agency, D E P, D E C, DOT, Town of Carmel, I should say, Town of Kent, Town of Patterson, Putnam County Health Department, everyone. During this period of time, myself and the state of New York did almost $2 million worth of improvements to Route 311. We widened Route 311. We widened the ramps to the highway on both sides. We have full approvals from DOT. We completed that work about four years ago. We intend, after that, we, I worked with East of Hudson, an environmental organization, and we spent about $300,000. A good part of it was done by East of Hudson, but I also contributed to it. And we took the drainage from Lake Carmel that was coming down those roads, tied into one pipe, and that pipe was outletting on my property about five feet into the property for the last 30 years, which started as a dribble, ended up to be a ditch that was 1,500 feet long, 10 feet wide, and possibly 10 feet deep, with then probably hundreds of thousands of yards of sediment that ended up in the river, because that's where it outletted, went down the hill, and then from the river, it went into Lake Carmel. Working with East of Hudson, we were able to get together, design it, take that pipe, put it into another pipe, build a retention basin for that water to remove all the sediment, and then let that water out a riprap path, so it got to the river now without any sediment. And then obviously, no sediment got to Lake Carmel. So we did that. We're about to do, in the next year, some more improvements to 311. You'll see improvements, starting myself with DOT, probably in mid-2023. The county is also committed, and just reaffirmed recently, the county is, is going to improve the intersection of Terry Hill Road and Route 311. It's a tough intersection there, so they are going to do that. We have already designed that improvement, and you'll probably see that go forward in the second half of '23 or the spring of '24. So to date, we're into the project for $15 million. We've also built a large retention pond on the property, so that any water coming down the hill or coming off 84 will go into that pond in the interim time, until we actually break ground and start to build a project. So that pond, we maintain it, we clean it out. So I'm here as an applicant, but quite frankly, I think legally I have vested rights in the project. If you spend this kind of money and make these kind of improvements, it sort of holds your approvals, because you've actually vested yourself in that project. So I'm here tonight as a courtesy to the board. You asked me to submit a letter. I submitted a letter, and I said, you know what? I came the last time, I'm around right now, and let me come in and answer any questions the board may have. And if the next meeting comes, if I'm in town, I'll be very happy to come again. And I really don't want to come here anymore. I want to pull the building permit and start building. But, you know, people, people ask me, "Your kid's going into this business." I said, "My kids have driven by the project since they were in elementary school. They have both graduated college, and they think there's something wrong with their father, and I still haven't broken ground on this project." So, so that's where we are. We've had long interest from some retailers. You've probably heard the rumors. Costco has been really hung with this project for years. I've had meetings with Costco, with public officials, in fact, the newspapers have reported on. The project is expensive, and I really, you need two anchors. If you don't have two anchors, it's hard to fund it. So we are talking to that second anchor, and we had the second anchor. And then the economic poop hit the fan, and all of a sudden, the internet went crazy, and everybody was shopping online, and that second anchor, which would have been a great anchor, I mean, Costco and them had made all their agreements between the two of them, so that kind of disappeared. But what we're seeing now, as my letter says to you, the retailers have realized, online is great, has helped them, but what they have found is when they have bricks and mortar store in a region, it actually helps online sales, because people could go online and fiddle around and say, "Oh, boy, I'd like to buy that. I'd like to see that." And if they notice a store close by, they'll drive there to touch it, feel it, see it. So they have now come to this balance that says, "We need well-placed bricks and mortar," which is stores, as they call it, bricks and mortar, "and we need online." They have to work together. That's a good thing, we'll have balance, because, you know, Amazon Prime is not going to be delivering for nothing. As fuel prices go to $6, $7, $8, unions come into Amazon, their drivers cost, and everything else goes up, all of a sudden, you're going to be paying for that stuff, and you're going to be paying to return it, and you may see a little resurgence with the retailers. And we're already seeing it post-pandemic. People, believe it or not, are anxious to get out and do something, and shopping is for some people an enjoyable thing, and for others, not so enjoyable. So I hope I answered your question.
Yep. Any ETA on breaking ground?
Excuse me?
Any ETA on breaking ground?
How would I feel?
No, any ETA, estimated time.
He means like a timeframe.
As I stated in the letter, I'd like to break ground tomorrow, but you can't break ground until the anchors are committed, and then the anchors in the banks allow it to take off. We tried to break ground a little more than a year ago with one anchor, and it just became too difficult. It was, we were trying to do that infrastructure, because a lot of infrastructure has to go in, and, and they don't stop, and the anchor doesn't just want their setup. They want to see a shopping set. Even though the stores may not be all in, they want to know that everything is kind of in place. So we just couldn't make the numbers work. So am I optimistic? I got to be optimistic, right? What would you do? Say it can't happen? At that point, you could, I'll buy a piece of granite, and you could bury me on the top of that hill, okay? So that's where it's at, and I'm being very direct with you and very honest about this.
All right. Thank you. Liz?
Thank you for coming in and giving an update. The reason that Mr. Kamara is here is because the board had granted two 90-day extensions, and the planning board has a new practice of, if they're going to give two 90-day or 180 days of extension, they want somebody to stop back in and give this kind of an update. So just a quick rundown, the approval that you granted in April would, would have run from, excuse me, July 8, 2022, so two 90-day extensions are going to bring us to early January. So this was the midpoint. So hopefully, a submittal will come in requesting, if necessary, a reapproval, or we'll hear something else on or about January. That's it.
Thank you, Liz. Mr. Kamara, do you have anything else to add?
No, like I said, the next time he comes up, if I'm in town, I'll come in. It'll be the same, but I'll just be dressed suit, and I'll whatever it's plain, but if anything has changed, it needs to be buckled.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here representing Kent Self-Storage?
Do you skip five minutes?
None on mine?
That's number four.
Ken, yeah, talk to us. Kent Self-Storage first.
Kent still self-storage?
Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman, member of the board, members of the board. My name is Thomas Carrigan, Civil engineering and project design consultant, representing Kent Self-Storage tonight. Just to kind of give you an update of where we were last, we were last here before this board, back in March, and since that time, we believe we've addressed all of the comments we heard from John Andrews, that the, all the bonds and the easement agreements with the town owners have been, the final drafts have been submitted to him for review, and we hope that that is moving forward and to be approved. And we believe we've addressed all of the comments from Liz Axelson regarding this project, and we're hoping that tonight we'll get our final approvals, but I think at this But I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Axelson, because I think they kind of have the answers.
Great, thank you. Members, any questions? John?
Yes, Liz.
Good evening. You have a hand-notated memorandum from myself. Basically, there is no comments this evening from Bruce. He's basically satisfied. I had a couple of comments. And this memo dates back to last November. God bless you. Needed Health Department approval. They have that. They needed the DOT permit extended. They have been granted an extension, albeit it expires November 15 of this year. But they did get an extension. Likely they'd get another if they asked. The next one's dealt with stormwater maintenance and access agreements and bonding. The town planning board attorney, Mr. Battistoni, and his colleague were able to get any drafts today of those instruments, consisting of an erosion control bond, a stormwater bond, a stormwater easement, and a stormwater agreement. They are all substantially in the appropriate form. I got the last draft just before I left my office this afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to get it. But as Mr. Carrigan stated, I promised I would get him the samples first thing tomorrow morning. And then he can get them to his attorney, and his client can take a look at them. And we should be relatively easy to resolve going forward because they are fully complete. And the bond amounts for the erosion control bond amount to $34,414. And the long-term stormwater maintenance management facilities bond estimate is $48,740. These were prepared quite a while ago by Julie. There are no substantive changes, so no need to revisit them. We would recommend that these board, these bond amounts be accepted. You can do that this evening. And that when ready, the amounts and appropriate performance securities would be forwarded to the town board for acceptance, together with the stormwater management easements. Because right now, it's all administrative work. It's work on his half and my half. And that's it. And then the last matter was the sidewalk easement. And as you all may recall, that's been taken care of and actually filed. So as far as I'm concerned, the next step for this should probably be chairman's signature once these last matters are bound up. But I'll defer to Liz.
John, those amounts were $34,414 for stormwater?
$34,414.
$414?
And 40.
And what bond is that?
One is stormwater and one is erosion sediment control.
So we did have offline consultation on August 17. And I'm not sure how, but I didn't find the submittal. So there's a submittal to be reviewed, which I will do. I'll go look in my inbox and find it as soon as I get back. And if there's everything needed to move forward, I guess we'll go ahead. We'll move forward with whatever procedure is going to be next, which would be final, I guess, signed plans. So, but I need to go ahead and do that review. So that's all I have. I wish I could give you better news than that, but I honestly didn't find the submittal in my inbox, so.
So all we have to do tonight?
Not, it's not, I'm not saying you didn't submit it, but for one reason or another, I didn't see it.
So all we have to do tonight is approve these two bonds?
Approve the bonds, and then, because the rest of it is administrative.
All right.
So you need two things. Approve the amounts, and move forward into the town board when ready.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve these two bonds? And when ready, send them to the town board?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
In a second.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yep.
Aye.
Jackie?
Jackie.
Stephen?
Aye.
And Hugo? And I vote aye, too.
Just quickly, just to ask. Assuming that the submission is reviewed by Ms. Axelson and deemed complete, would we then be able to just submit for signature once everything else is taken care of?
That would be the policy, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, is this per condition of approval?
Yes. This is satisfactory. This satisfies your conditions of approval. Because they've extended it. They asked you to have an extension.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll let you know.
Yep.
But I'll get to those forms, and then you can't wait.
Right.
You can't wait.
No, thank you.
Now, is there anyone here for Putnam Nursing Home?
Yeah.
Please.
Hi, I'm Deana Kay. I'm the administrator. And this is, I'm the administrator of Putnam Nursing. And this is.
My name is Josh Hoffman. I'm a healthcare administrator, 25-year employee at Putnam as well.
And how can we help you?
We are looking, we're at the 90-day check-in for today. And unfortunately, the Department of Health is, has not approved any project certificate of needs right now because we're still very impacted by the pandemic. It is, we're in the, we're just in the category. I know a letter was sent to Vera, and Liz was on this letter, that we're in a waiting pattern right now. The operator and owner of the facility is still 100% interested in improving. And we're looking forward to moving along. And that's really where we are right now.
Thank you. Liz?
First of all, thank you for coming in and giving an update. As I mentioned before, the board does like to have these check-ins when a reapproval is done. For the timing on this one, I think it's going to be two and a half months before this applicant has to come back to the board for a reapproval. So that would be the next step. And that's it for now.
So there's, again, nothing for us to do here?
Nothing for you to do tonight.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any further questions for us?
No, we're just in limbo.
Sorry.
I know, but thank you.
Members, do you have any questions? All right, let's move on. Is there anyone here representing White Vernon?
Evening. John Carroll, representing Madeline White from Chiston Vernon. Have you seen this before? I think we dealt with all the major, or we're down to minor issues, I hope. What the main issue is the easement. There is an act egress and ingress easement to this property from Horse Town Road. But the easement, for some reason, did not include utilities. It's my belief that that was an oversight because the subdivision showed a house at the end of this easement on right-of-way, a driveway. And how would you get electricity to this house without utilities? So we've been dealing with lawyers from New York City and DEC. DEC, because DEP bought the property, and it goes through a DEC process. It's been a very slow process. Mr. Schilling has been working on it for several months. We believe we're getting close. I don't see why they would not allow utilities to come in there. But we have shown an alternative to coming in from here to the right-of-way to the house here. There's a flag lot, flag going to this property from Nickel Street, which is the yellow 1,400 feet of T-poles and wire. We've met with these, no, we met with NISIC, and they gave us the pricing for that. And they will install the poles and the wires if we have to go that route. Then we do it with a track machine. So the disturbance would be minimal. I think there's like 1,200, 3,400, 7 poles. Only one hole is within the 100-foot setback of the stream here. The purple line is the 100-foot setback. And we submitted plans, in accordance with Bruce's request, is about 3,300 feet, square feet of disturbance within the 100-foot setback. We hope that by having this alternative, the board can put this over for administration.
Carroll?
Okay, again, speaking for Bruce and myself. There are memos from both of us. Mr. Carell is correct. Mostly remaining issues are administrative. We still would like to see that easement fulfilled. But the major stumbling block, as he pointed out, was, how do we bring utilities in? And he's shown a viable alternative. He has filed a wetland permit, kind of amends his original permit, because he didn't need one originally. I will speak for Bruce on this. It's a relatively de minimis action. Mr. Carell was able to confirm that NISIC will install. They will use a tractor, so there's minimal disturbance. The poles are every 200 feet, thereabouts. So the disturbance through the crossing through the wetland is relatively negligible. There is a, if you look at the aerial photograph, and I think Jack's probably walked it, there's like a goat trail that exists in there anyway. So I imagine NISIC is going to follow that. So I think the long and short of it is, we don't think that the need for a wetland permit introduces any new impacts that are of any substantial nature. You don't need to reopen a public hearing. You don't need to really make this a big deal. What I think Bruce and I would be in a position to recommend, the public hearing has been closed. This wetland permit has been properly applied for. The disturbances and the work related thereto have been properly identified. I think they order on what can be considered de minimis in this particular instance. And we don't know whether it's going to be used in the final analysis at all. It may go back to the original easement before they enter the resolve. But it's under, it's within property. It's solely under the ownership and control of the applicant. And they have demonstrated also, you remember this little piece of the driveway where they veered outside easement? Mr. Carell has again demonstrated, and to my satisfaction, that if they pull the driveway back into the easement, no harm, no foul, it's doable. And it doesn't increase the impacts either. So as a consequence, what we would recommend is that the board accept this and authorize it to proceed on an administrative track towards completion. I think Bruce and I are of the opinion that it's right.
Thank you, John. Questions, members?
Yes. Can we get that, the type of vehicle they're going to utilize for putting in that pole line in writing? Because of, NISIC is going to contract it out. It's going to be another party involved because NISIC is not going to do it. They're going to have, they're going to contract that workout. They're not going to use their equipment. So just make sure that we get this in writing. And then also on the wetland, any kind of cribbing or anything like that to limit your disturbance? Would like to get that in writing as well.
No, there's nothing there as far as wetlands goes. There's a stream, it's well-defined. Yes, and as far as NISIC putting something in writing, I can get that. I can give John the name of the person I dealt with, too.
When it comes to the wetlands, they're up on the rocky side of this. If you've been out there? There's a stream, and then it kind of rises. There was topo, but it kind of rises off to this pole line because the pole line sits high above the stream. So they're not going to need to crib or bridge anything. There's no vegetation to be disturbed. If any, then they're going to take down a few saplings and run their machine up there. But whatever Jackie provided, right, he did submit an email that confirmed, we have it in writing, that NISIC said they would do it, they would use a tractor. But to your point, we just need written confirmation that they're going to live with that.
Yeah. Okay. That's it.
Yes.
Here, sheet S1 and S2. Didn't I at one time request that the large parcel of land surrounding the 39-acre parcel of White Vernon there be determined and put on the map with tax lot number? And I asked one time, who owns that right-of-way? And who owns the property where that proposed easement is going to come out of? And do we have the written agreement and description for all of that?
All of that is on the original subdivision map. It's owned by, that property is owned by New York City, DEP. It was purchased by New York.
It should be on the plan. It should be on the plan. They're the owners of that.
I can put it on the map. You know, it's not part of this parcel. So what we're doing now are formally. I can put that on the plane. I don't, I don't recall what.
But an adjoining owner.
I don't recall what adjoining owner you're talking about besides the one.
The one, the one to the west of the 39 acres.
That, that was lot number one in a subdivision that this planning board approved back a long time ago.
Yeah.
New York City purchased that property as part of their watershed protection because it's in the West Branch watershed. And they purchase properties from willing seller for purposes of watershed protection. So they own that property, they own the easement, and they own, and that's what we're, why we're dealing with New York City to get the language in the easement to include the utilities. But the subdivision was made, and that easement, that said ingress and egress was done prior to New York City buying that property. So New York City bought that property with whatever notes and requirements were on the subdivision map. But I can put the, I'll put New York City on the map.
Yeah, so New York City owns the property that, the right-of-way coming in off Horse Town Road?
Yes.
Yeah. And well, once you get closer, when that little easement comes into play, is that the same ownership under, under DEP? Or is there another different owner in there?
No, it's the same owner. That, it's like a flag lot that leads to lot number one. And New York City owns all of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I've never seen the subdivision map. And that never came in with the submittal.
That was probably submitted, I think, when it started with the submittal. So we'll have to track it down if we did get, if there was a copy.
Yeah, I can, I have it.
So if you can submit that as part of our administrative, could you pass it?
Yes, I will, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure all the legalities here are all blended. Nobody's going to be coming back and saying, well, you can't get to your house.
No, I understand. I understand.
Members, can I get a motion to move this application to administrative track?
I'll make that motion.
In a second, please.
Yeah, yeah, I can do it.
And Hugo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yep.
And Carlos?
Aye.
Simon? And I vote aye, too. Thank you, John.
And the next one?
Oh. Raniere.
You've seen Raniere before, several times. The project was put on hold probably a little over a year ago by the owner. And we had been meeting with Richard Othmer on the, on the, on the terminus of Hillside Avenue as a, so that cars, trucks can turn around. And they're presently, Hillside just comes down to a dead end and ends. And on this plan, yellow, that's, that's the right-of-way for Hillside. Am I backwards here? Wait. This is, well, okay. This is, well, okay. The yellow is Hillside, or the right-of-way. The, oh, this is, okay. Sorry. All right. This is, the yellow is the right-of-way. There was a big concern about whether or not the driveway was going to be on private property or the town paper road. So the yellow is the town paper road. The purple is the present pavement of the terminus of Hillside Road, it just ends. And the red is how we're going to give them a place to, their highway guys to back up in here and turn around. And this is the driveway into Rineiri's house, which is up here. And that, that is something that we've met with Dick Othmer about, and that's the, that's what we came up with. I think maybe John has another idea I heard recently.
It's not that I have another idea. Richard, I did meet with Richard Othmer. Wanted Richard and myself to be on the same page. We're going to borrow much of what Mr. Carell has put together. We do need to make some tweaks. We do need to put together some requirements that the highway superintendent specifically has. What, what the plan that Richard and I came up with when we met today was for, he asked me to kind of doodle on this plan and put together the basics of what he would like to see, and put together a separate memo that just addresses this issue. And I'm in the process of doing that. I met with Mr. Othmer today, I did not have a chance to complete it, but we're going to try to make it as simple as possible. And we think, we think, we believe we have the matter, that the matter can be resolved. It's going to mean, it's going to mean some tweaks to this, it's going to mean some additional work, it's going to mean some other things, but we believe that is doable. Now, the other part of this is, there are some other issues in the memos that still need to be taken care of. I think Mr. Carell did do the correct thing, which is focus on the biggest issue that had everybody concerned, which was how do we make this road work? And I spoke with Mr. Othmer again, and we believe we're on our way to getting that to work. And as a consequence, we would now like to see Mr. Carell focus on the rest of the remaining issues and see if we can put those to bed as well. And Bruce has a similar opinion, but it all, it all stems from getting this right-of-way correct and getting the scope of work correct. And as I said, Rich has been fairly specific with me, he gave me specific direction, so I will work toward that end. And I'm going to ask again if I could have authorization to work directly with Mr. Carell once we get that point. I'll make sure you folks are copied on everything, but we will address it and go from there.
Thank you, John. Let's see, you have anything to add?
So I haven't reviewed a few rounds of this because it really is a road issue and erosion sedimentation issue. So I kind of stayed out of the fray for a while. But I did do a review according to my July 7, 2021 memorandum. And the thing is, one of the things that occurred that was, I think was a really good move, was that a merger occurred so that what originally had been proposed as a lot-line revision to make it all one big lot, they went to the county and had it just all merged. But the map doesn't reflect that. It still has a lot of notation on it that makes it look like a lot-line revision. And I had a lot of prior comments that weren't addressed, and also I had kind of, again, opted out because there was consultation going on with highway superintendent, engineering, and Bruce, who knows all the wetland stuff. So I didn't do a review because a number, so many items weren't addressed that it were just, it didn't make sense to do a review. So I held off. I think offline consultation is a good idea. Most of my comments would end up being cleaning up and making the map more clearly show one really decent-sized parcel where all these little teeny-weeny parcels on the side have already been joined to it. So I don't have any other recommendations for anything else to do but have more things tidied up on the map.
All right. Thank you. Sir, John, you don't want us to move this to administrative track, you just want permission?
It's almost like creating a judgment on somebody else.
Right.
Hopefully it'll be the spirit of tax that we develop and what we need to complete this and bring it into compliance.
Members, could I get a motion to enable the consultants to deal directly with Mr. Carell? In a moment. In a second.
I'll second it.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, I appreciate that opportunity. I know that I apologize for not attending the work session, I had a conflict with another town, but this is the best way to take care of it.
Can I back you up for one more to White Vernon? We see that there's a, I'm just looking at Putnam County E parcel. Besides the DEC parking, there's two parcels that are right there that are privately owned. So there, it looks like there's one adjoining right next to that easement. So there is a neighboring property next to that easement?
Well, that, the neighboring property is the property that New York City bought. I can.
No, it's owned by somebody else. It's owned by Mary Jenkins Nichols. And then the other property is owned by.
Talking about on the Nichols side.
Yeah. No, I'm on the Horse Pound side.
On the Horse Pound side?
Yeah, on the Horse Pound side. So where the easement goes down, there's neighbors there, so I'd just like to see that on the map.
Okay.
All right, sir?
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, did, has there been determination about Hillside Drive or Road, or whatever it is? Is that a town road? Has Rich decided that that's a town road?
I'll defer to, I'll defer to Mr. Andrews.
It is unclear at this time.
Okay.
But one of the steps that Rich and I talked about today is between Mr. Rineiri and there are a couple other homeowners in that same vicinity, a couple of which have already petitioned the town board, to accept this portion of the road. So acceptance of the road will be conditioned upon the satisfactory improvement by Mr. Rineiri to, to make this all work. Because you're not going to accept, you're not going to accept a piece of paper. You're going to accept a completed installation. That's why we, we can't, and just give you a little example, we cannot meet the town standards as published because the right-of-ways that were established in this vicinity are all 40-foot.
Yeah.
The design of the town highway specifications all presume 50-foot right-of-ways. So we have to kind of, so what's going to happen is kind of like almost a three-step process. We're going to have to reach agreement, get a design. Richie's going to have to issue a letter that basically says he is willing to accept a less-than-standard configuration for a turnaround in this circumstance because of the following reasons. And he's already got them established in his mind. And that he would further recommend that upon completion of all the improvements by Mr. Rineiri, that the town board accept the defined portion of this as a town road. It'll probably be a small portion of Sunset and a small portion of.
Hillside.
Hillside, yes. So, but that's all part of what I want to get in writing to this gentleman and Mr. Rineiri and Mr. Bradley, so they all understand what Richie's position is.
Yeah, because usually even with the older subdivisions like this, at the end of it, there was always an offer of dedication.
Right. This one, it's only on the map.
Yeah, yeah.
10 years, the best.
Okay, good. So we're making some progress on that.
Thanks, John.
Next one.
All right. We're sorry that apparently the residents are funding you.
This is a property owned by Mr. Unziata on Smalley Corners Road. It was previously owned by someone named Mealy, it has health department approval. I think we're pretty much to the end of it. The last thing was a tree plan, which we've provided to the town. We're asking to waive the public hearing since the properties to the north and to the west are vacant. The property to the south is, the house is up the hill and really, it's not really affected by this construction. We'd like to get this to administrative review also.
Here again, there's a memo from both Bruce and myself. I will echo Mr. Carell's comments that most of the stuff and two issues have been addressed. There's a couple things I, I think we can improve with some, with some grading. And Bruce, Bruce has some minor technical points. So point of fact, the only thing really left is dotting some of the i's and crossing some of the t's and perhaps improving the design a little bit to hopefully eliminate some retaining walls if we can, or at least substantially reduce them. But having said that, you do have the ability to waive a public hearing. This is a minor project. It is a single-family home. We're going to defer to you because it has become your custom practice to hold public hearings. But if you decide to hold the public hearing, both Bruce and I are comfortable with, once you close that public hearing, providing there is no substantive comment, that the project is really ready to be, to move to administrative review. So it all hinges on whether you prefer to hold a public hearing or not. And I leave that up to you.
The only thing that I see is that there's no, I want to make sure that there's no commercial use stated underneath this property, underneath the site plan because it is being bought, being developed by a commercial company. Just some kind of.
We can do that.
Some kind of note.
He owns a pizza place.
I got it. He's just putting it in his name, just to make sure that he's not going to be shuffling ingredients or something in and out of them. You know what I mean? We don't want, we don't want to disturb the neighborhood.
We can have a note placed on there that says, to be used for a single-family home only, no.
Commercial, yep.
And any occupants would be per the code.
Yep.
Members, how do you feel about the public hearing?
Yes.
You want to hold?
Oh, yeah.
All right. We should set it for next month.
Yes, yes.
Could I get a motion to set a public hearing for Anunziata Smalley Corners for, what's the date next month?
October.
The October meeting.
I'll make that motion.
In a second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
John, do these latest drawings, do they reflect the actual field conditions out there? You know, you moved the house and the septic system and flip-flops and stuff and.
Didn't change anything, the house has been. We didn't change anything, the house is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's another project.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Dominoes, like a satellite site.
You never know.
Well, it's true because you have all these people.
All right, thank you, John.
They do these satellite things inside.
J. Philip Real Estate?
That is true.
Was that taken off the agenda?
When you run it, when you buy that business, it's a saving somewhere, you know?
J. Philip Realty did not need to be on the agenda because it was on the draft agenda originally. There was a little back and forth. They originally proposed a sign that was too big.
Good.
And so I was going back and forth with the woman who was trying to move the application forward and explained to her that if she went ahead with a 32-square-foot sign, she would have to go get an area variance. And if she had a sign that conformed, she wouldn't even have to come see you guys and go. So anyway, Bruce and I, I mean, Bill Walters and I worked with her. She got a new illustration in that showed a 3-foot-by-6-foot sign, which complies with the zoning, and she received a de minimis determination letter, so.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone here for Bernie's Hidden Treasure?
That just wants money.
That's an escrow.
We're going to return escrow?
In the next three or four simple returns of escrow, I have a building, and Bruce has a building, and I think Liz has handled all the minimis fee.
Can we do them in one swell group?
I can't do that. Can't do all of the above.
Can I get a motion to approve the request to return the escrow for Bernie's Hidden Treasure Honey Cakes Bakery and T&amp;M Rustic Home?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dan Carlo?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Aye. Steven?
Aye.
You? Aye.
And I say aye too. So we're done above the line? Bruce, our Holly representative?
My name is Bob Bradley, and I'm here to represent the Hollies. The only thing we had to do now was to submit a plan that went with the stipulation that was signed. Today, I believe electronically, we had sent one up to Vera. We met with Paul later on, and I'm just, she's beginning to nod that she got it. And that would take care of it for now. Our site plan will probably be back with a site plan, I would imagine, in January. So we will, this will get filed with the stipulation, the plan that we sent today.
Was the stipulation approved by the town board?
Yeah, yeah.
So I have to sign it now?
You've signed it already, Phil. You've signed it. As a matter of fact, I even notarized it. So the, so the, the plan has been sent, if obviously you want to take a look at it, make sure it's all right. And then that'll go with the stipulation, that'll be filed. And then our site plan will be done in January. We should make the January meeting, just to let you know.
Very good. Thank you. There's something here?
No.
Oh. You're going to go through below the line?
No.
Thank you, Bob.
You can add whatever you want, I'm sorry.
Let's not fight, children.
Well, no, at least I was being overly conciliatory.
Behave yourself.
I'm trying to behave myself, so, agreed. There was a little back and forth. It was just a matter of making sure that we had the right notation on the right plan and that the right plan for Holly, the right concept plan was to be filed. And that was, that was pretty much it. And I haven't taken a look at it or seen the dialogue, but I'll take a look tomorrow. Or Monday.
Thank you. Who's working? You're working?
Am I working? I'm always working.
Poor guy.
New York State DEP, Seven Hills, I believe the ball is in their court. I provided them with comments, Liz provided them with comments. They were going to address those comments and prepare the MYLAR. We have not seen any of that as of yet, so the ball is in their court. Kent Manor, Kent Manor is in the hands of the attorneys. They are pursuing their five-acre waiver with DEC. They made another submission to DEC, and DEC issued another comment letter that says we still don't have enough information, please submit more. So they're, they're in at DEC, we get copied on what they submit, but we, Bruce and I, are of the opinion that that's the proper venue for what they are seeking and that you should stay out of it. And that appears to be the case. Route 52 Development, that is Liz.
Nothing new.
Thank you.
Freeland Pure, the ball is in their court, and Vera had sent them a letter asking what the status was and received no response. So it's, it's in their hands. We have nothing to do. And then the last matter is the Kent mining law. Bruce, Liz, and myself have met in a number of Zoom meetings, and we have, I think, what we've, in our minds, determined to be a final draft, that we will be submitting to the town board representatives in the next week. So that should be out of our hands by no later than Friday of next week.
Will you send it to us? Will you send it to us, or to me?
I, Mr. Chairman, I, I'll send it to whoever I'm directed to send it to. The instructions I got from Chris Ruthman were to those folks first, but we will ask the question, and if we.
A minute after you send it to them, send it to me.
I, I will do whatever I'm directed to do, and I just heard you.
Or you send it to Vera.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Ladies, do you have any questions or comments for us? Members, any questions or comments?
No.
Consultants, anything else to add?
I'm good.
Thank you all very much for coming. Oh, no, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Okay, that's okay.
In a second. And all in favor?
All right.
Thank you all very much for coming. See you next month.